We just say happy country health care day.
No, no. Here we go, ready?
Happy rural health care day.
Good job.
Thank you.
From the rural girls.
There we go. All right, it's 12:31, I'll call us to order for the city council committee meetings. Turn it over to Ms. Kirfey.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. We want to start with, um, Ally is going to come up and, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing. Yes.
Ashley.
Ashley, yes, sorry. I give our update, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page.
Hello, um, I'm just gonna give y'all an update on what Main Street's been doing since my last update this summer. So, um, Main Street's focus is historic preservation and restoration, bringing downtowns back to life and making them a place for all people to go. Stevensville's Main Street program began in 2021 and for the year 2024, we were recognized as an affiliate program from the National Main Street America. So, this last little bit more than a quarter, um, Main Street has been doing a lot. During Tarleton Family Weekend, we hosted the first Ally Bingo, and it will not be the last, and we had about 160 attendees. That included both visitors and locals. Main Street helped in the planning of the city's Chamber Mix, which was held at Cross Timbers Fine Arts and catered by Greer's and Hearsay Wine Bar. In October, we had our last Farmers and Artisan Market for 2024. We had 49 vendors attend, making it our largest market yet. Cars and Coffee at the Courthouse is steadily increasing as well, and they had at least 120 cars at that market in October. On December 7th, Cars and Coffee will be having their annual toy drive around the courthouse for their, um, event that morning. It'll be from 7:00 to 11:00 a.m. Our planters that are around the courthouse won fourth place in a photo contest by Earth Planters. We had our final downtown cleanup, um, for the year, and we had over 30 volunteers that came and helped attend, clean up and tend to all parts of downtown. We hosted, for the first time, a Texas Municipal League Meeting Dinner, and we had over 60 attendees from our region. On 9/11, we assisted in putting on the ceremony around the courthouse. Main Street gave a presentation to the E-RAF County Retired Teachers Association. We now have access to, uh, the Datify software to access information and those numbers on visitors. And so I've been learning a lot about this resource and how we can best use it in Main Street. And I'm gonna start tracking the numbers for downtown so that we have a baseline to go off of for just regular days as well as event days. Um, our social media numbers on Facebook and Instagram are steadily increasing from the reach, the interactions, impressions, and the followers. For our downtown spotlight, we've had about 17 since our last presentation, and overall, those posts have reached over 53,000 people, and they've had over 56,000 impressions. Um, so coming up next Saturday on the 30th, we do have Christmasville, which will consist of a chili cook-off, and those team sign-ups are open till the 27th. There will be Christmas character photos in various downtown merchant stores. We'll have an ugly sweater contest, and there will be other activities in downtown merchant stores. We'll have carriage rides, a lighted Christmas parade, um, live music throughout the day, and a firework show. So, does anybody have any questions? Okay, well, thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Again, I would like to introduce Ally Whitworth. I don't know if everybody has met her, she is our new tourism manager, and she's going to give us an update on that.
So, how do you, my name is Ally Whitworth. If I haven't gotten a chance to meet you, as of September 23rd, I started as the tourism manager, and I'm very excited. Um, but just a little bit about myself, I'm originally from Argyle, Texas, where I grew up with my mom and my three older sisters. Um, and I have my bachelor's and master's degrees from Texas A&amp;M University in College Station. Very proud of that. Um, and my bachelor's degree, um, I studied Recreation Park and Tourism Sciences, where I also got the opportunity to have certifications in professional event management, hotel and hospitality management, and tourism management. Um, and then my master's degree, I decided to dive more into studying the tourism fields, but specifically tourism at the city level with CVBs. And while obtaining this degree, I also got to work with Visit College Station, um, being able to see how tourism operates at the city level. One of the first things that I did on the job, um, was create a vision, mission, vision statement. Um, our mission at Visit the Ville is to promote Stevensville as a destination that celebrates our rich Western culture and heritage. Through hospitality and informative outreach, we invite visitors to experience our vibrant community while boosting the local economy through accommodations, dining, and events. And then our mission is to be a vibrant community that attracts visitors by showcasing our unique culture with a strong emphasis on our Western heritage. We aim to foster growth and innovation, enhancing the local economy while creating, while creating a welcoming environment for all. Another thing that I, um, decided to work on firstly was a visitor's guide. We do not have a visitor's guide yet, um, and so I was really excited to be able to do this and also help me get to know Stevensville and all that makes it unique and special. And so this is, um, a mock-up of our visitor's guide that we're printing very soon. I'm very excited. Um, and so on the far, on the far left, no, right, so sorry, my, on the far right, is gonna be the front of the visitor's guide. In the middle is the back portion, and then on the far left is one of the flaps, um, for it. And then, um, on my next slide, it shows the inside of the visitor's guide. Um, and shop, eat, stay, and play, those are all tabs on our website. Um, and speaking of our website, I have done, um, quite a few updates on it, um, one of which I'm very proud of, um, is our events tab. So this is the homepage of Visit the Ville, and then if you go to the next tab, um, on that far right, you see that the events, that's if you go there. And then if you click on that, then it'll take you to our events calendar, which is on the next slide. And so it'll take you to this, and we update the events car, calendar very regularly. We're very up to date regarding like Tarleton events, city events, all those good things. Um, so that way, when visitors come and see our website, they know what's going on in the town, um, when they are planning a trip here, trying, planning to stay here, which is really awesome. And then some more just tourism updates. Um, Texas Tourism Friendly, Texas, Texas Tourism Friendly is a certification that the state of Texas offers cities and destinations, and they're able to apply for it. We are in the process of obtaining this certification. It's a pretty big deal, and it will help make people more aware of Stevensville as a place to visit, which is really awesome. And then continued education, I recently attended the Texas Sounds and Cities Conference in Lubbock. This coincides with our Texas Music Friendly certification that we have here in Stevensville, and I got to learn all about the programs that the Texas Mu, that the Texas Music Office offers, um, to help support our local venues and artists and everything. And so I got to learn a lot about how I can apply that to how we can sputter, support our local venues and artists here in Stevensville, which is really great. Um, and then also, I've been getting to know Stevensville, I've been here for about seven weeks now, so, um, learning what makes Stevensville tick and how special and unique it is, because even being here for this short period of time, I understand how, um, I'm able to see just how special and unique Stevensville is, which is really awesome. And that is all I have for you. And that's my contact information.
Does anybody have any questions for Ally?
One of the things I'd encourage you to do is to get with Monica and Jason, and also David. Uh, EV stations are a big deal, and I know there was a conversation at one time about doing EV downtown around the square or somewhere as a way of when people come to Tarleton and other events, that they can come here and charge. Because as a matter of fact, I was with somebody recently, they said they're about out of electricity on their car, and he said, where do you go if they have a charging station, so they hit that button, it takes them right to that location, which would be a good reason to get people to the downtown area. So I encourage y'all to look at that both of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the next thing we have is the, um, airport, I thought, sorry, I thought you were gonna talk. The Airport Rules and Regulations. On August 30th, 2024, the Airport Advisory Board adopted and would like the, would recommend that the city council adopt their proposed airport rules and regulations. And these rules are developed or improved, I'm sorry, have been developed or improved with the federal grant assistance and conveyances of federal property assistance. So Sean and Daryl propose here, if anybody has any questions about the rules.
Shall I?
Sure. If you don't mind coming up.
Hello, everyone. Sean Clemens, I'm the airport manager. If you have any questions about the airport rules and regulations, uh, feel free to send them my way.
Uh, is this a, uh, are these, is this a new set or is this a revised set of, of rules?
This is a new set.
This is the first, I guess, the first.
First version.
First version we've had.
Correct.
That's what I thought. Um, I don't have any real, uh, question. I, I read over, uh, the whole rules document, it seems pretty comprehensive. You know, something that, uh, if we're gonna develop, uh, a growing airport, I do think it's a great idea that we, uh, adopt a set of rules like this. Glad to see it.
Anybody else? So then I would make the motion that we send to council that we adopt the air, um, the new rules and regulations, I'm sorry, airport rules and regulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll send that on to council with a positive recommendation. And then, all right. Then we have the, um, staff report for the Airport Improvement Plan and the request to pay the KSA Engineering for the Airport Layout Plan Update with narrative and survey and GIS services. This went out to bid, and they would like to accept the KSA bid. If anybody has any questions?
Let me run this one down for the committee and council members real quick. If you remember, I think it was about a month ago, we asked you to select the farm after doing a request for qualifications. But essentially what they're doing is an update to the Airport Land Plan, um, with narrative, which is a designation given by the FAA in Texas dot aviation. Uh, this is all part of the ongoing extension project that's been going for several years. At one of, one of the meetings the mayor and I had in Austin, uh, members of the FAA said that over the years of the project, uh, their standards and stuff had changed, and that in order to continue forward, uh, we have to do this again. Good news is, uh, Texas dot aviation awarded us for 450,000, looks like it's 399 and some change, and it's a 95.5, uh, reimbursement. Uh, and we've got budgets to be able to do that, and if we wanna move forward on the extension, it's, it's a hurdle we have to jump over.
And that's our portion of the 400,000?
No, that's the total cost.
That's the total, okay, so we've paid 5%.
And then we'd be 5% of that.
Yes, sir.
So we ask the committee to recommend.
Well, I would move that we, uh, approve the request to pay KSA Engineering for Airport Layout Plan Update, Narrative Survey, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will also send that to council with a positive recommendation. And that's all I have.
Mr. Cook.
Uh, thank you, sir. The, uh, under Development Services, we've been asked by, uh, to revisit this particular item. What we're talking about, of course, is B2 zoning permitting, conditional uses in B2 zoning. Uh, we discussed this, uh, in, back in June, and then in August, reported to the city council, the recommendation was accepted, uh, that, uh, we hold off on this particular thing and, and until the, uh, until the comprehensive plan was done, until the comprehensive plan subsequently, the revised land use regulations were done. We've been asked to revisit this. Uh, one of our, uh, city council, uh, members has asked that we at least put this back on the agenda to talk about further. And, uh, and, uh, and I, I, well, I've seen very few things that it didn't hurt to talk about. So I, uh, I, uh, thought maybe that, uh, this would be a good time, and frankly, it's, uh, it's basically, uh, allowing, uh, the, um, if we approve this or recommended approval to the, to the council, uh, all auto-related uses currently listed and permitted uses as conditional uses with this approach. Kind of softens it in the B2 district. And I'd like to get, uh, Steve to come up to and, uh, maybe respond to that just a little bit and, and give a little bit more background, uh, with regard to this item, if you don't mind, Steve.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman, uh, Mayor, Council. So in item one, alternative one, I think the discussion at the time was that if we wanted to maybe look at all of the auto-related uses in the B2 district and try to put those, uh, in as conditional uses only, give us a little bit more control on those businesses that will be coming into the city and trying to build on some of our major thoroughfares and try to soften the, uh, using your word, soften some of the business aesthetics that are on those, at, in those locations. Uh, we have a prominent location currently at the corner of South Graham and, and, and South Loop that recently, uh, they closed business, it's up for sale, we have a developer looking at that now. It's gonna go back as an auto-related use, as a permitted use under the B2 district, but it's going to, um, you know, allow that property to kind of freshen up a little bit. But the discussion at the time was, do we wanna continue to use some of these higher-profile properties for auto-related businesses? And that was why that was suggested as an alternative for you. Um, Councilman Cook, I don't know if that properly addresses the, the discussion, or you're the question that you had for me, but...
There was another piece of property that was involved in this originally.
Yes, sir.
And, and everything, and it was the feeling of, uh, I think it went from planning and zoning, did it not?
Yes, sir. So what prompted this entire discussion originally was we had a rezone case for a particular property in town. Uh, that rezone was because we discovered, uh, through the application process that a paint and body shop is a permitted use in the industrial district but not in the B2 district. Sometimes these districts abut one another, um, and we can allow a paint and body shop next door, but we can't necessarily allow it in a B2 zone district. And that was a, a discovery when this particular company came in and acquired a piece of property. We found out that it was, uh, they were not gonna be able to operate as a paint and body shop. So, um, that led to the discussion, um, through P&amp;Z and then ultimately with council. Uh, after we, P&amp;Z recommended denial, city council upheld that denial, and then we circled back with some dis, uh, committee discussions on, do we wanna make any, any revisions to the B2 district? So we had these four recommendations come out of, out of, uh, Development Services Committee. Council acted or chose to go with, uh, take no action at this time, because we do have a comprehensive plan and the revision of the land use regulations that are, uh, soon to be, uh, brought forward through RFQ, we're working on that now. So, uh, ultimately, do we want to revisit this? Uh, is it something that we want to, to generate some more discussion on, look at that a little more closely? Perhaps consider the conditional use approach where each, uh, paint and body shop in a B2 district would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and awarded a, a conditional use permit through, uh, the recommendation of P&amp;Z and the city council. Uh, but staff simply hear for direction on this item, and, and we can bring something back to you with your guidance.
Do we have any questions from council?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I, I know I'm on your committee, but, uh, but I actually, I am the one that asked to revisit this. Uh, since our initial meeting with, uh, the particular company and, and question, I've traveled from Salt Lake to Nashville, and I've seen these caliber collision, and it's who we're talking about. I've seen them in, in towns that were, I've seen them in El Paso. Uh, I think it's probably the nicest, one of the nicest buildings in El Paso, uh, going through there. Um, but I've, I've looked at every single one of them, uh, in, in all these communities, and it's actually, they're a class act. I mean, that they really are. Um, now, do I feel like we need to allow this type of business? Like just say, hey, you know, every paint and body is, is, is open, we can do this. I mean, I don't think that's the best answer, but if we can do it case-by-case basis, I think that when we have a company that has an established, um, uh, history, established reputation, uh, somebody that, that does put out a good product, that has a clean, uh, you know, clean outside and, and actually is a, is a major, uh, player in the, in the industry throughout. I, I think, with my thinking, I think we should be able to, to look at this on a case-by-case basis.
Anyone else, uh, Mayor? If it's a conditional use, once the condition that owner changes or the person occupying the property changes, does the condition go away? Or is it guaranteed from that point on? And that was the big issue, the point we talked about, was if we did it to this person, once that building is gone, I mean, when that owner is gone, someone's gonna come and do the same thing.
Well, I believe the use, the, the conditional use, I think, is the answer to that question. I, I think it would stick with the property as long as the use continued and didn't venture into some other, some other type of use, uh, outside of the, what the council allowed through that, that conditional use permit. Um, so I think that addresses the question. And I'm seeing some nods from city manager and city attorney.
Yeah, it can change owners as long as it's still used as that same use.
Same as, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And to me, that's one of the issues with it, because we were concerned, this company may be an excellent company and may keep a, a good house. But if it's conditional use on the property, as Mr. Killen said, then just like zoning, it stays with the property regardless of the owner as long as that use is consistent, correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, I've done a little reading on this today and looking at what some other cities do. And when you look at the conditional use permit definition in the city of Stevensville, it says that it's a conditional use based on the regulations that are set forth within that zoning district. What you see in some other cities is a more extensive explanation of conditional use, and that more extensive explanation basically says the city council can place conditions on the permit that go well beyond those regulations, and it can be as, I mean, it's pretty granular, down to the duration of the permit, um, landscaping, installation of sidewalk, street improvements. So, I mean, I think we have the latitude, uh, to be able to expand on that definition some and include, uh, or have the, the council have... or have the, the council have the power to, to say, yes, you can have this permit, but it has to be granted to you under these conditions, and if those conditions are not met, or suddenly you're no longer adhering to those conditions, then the permit is revoked. I think that's a, a direction we could possibly consider going, if that's the pleasure of the council.
But those guidelines would need to be put in place before you granted that conditional use to anyone, correct?
Very good point. It would have to be an item before, P and Z, directed to P and Z by either the committee or council. That recommendation would have to come back to city council, and the city council would have to act on any revision to the zoning regulation. And that, and that holds true with any, any land use regulation that we modify, has to go through P and Z for recommendation, public hearing, and then back to council.
Steve, if we ask you to come back to us with a conditional use that has, is a little more restrictive than what, as, as you just, as you just described to us. Timing-wise, when could that be done?
I think we could have a, you know, a proposed revision for the committee and council to review at the next committee meeting, so I think we could easily accomplish that.
Matty, you and Brandon are on this committee too. Do y'all have any comments with regard to this? Would that work for you too?
Yeah, I mean, we would take no action tonight until we got the revisions, correct, or am I...
Yeah, we would have to wait until we have revisions of this, and then we would recommend it to, probably go on to planning and zoning, to come back to us.
Yeah, that's...
I'm comfortable if you see the, like, obviously, you should be the revisions and the thing, or move forward with it.
Brandon?
Yeah, that's, same thing she was saying, I'm, wait, let's, let's let them bring us something to look at, and if we like it, we can pass it on to P and Z.
You?
Sounds great.
Okay. If that's all right with y'all, then, if, and, I wouldn't think we'd be able to vote on this, but we would ask that our staff would bring this back, or if you have a problem with that, is that okay?
That is perfect. Just, I want y'all to understand, typically, you do not have committee meetings in December, because the date is so close to Christmas, so are you fine with mid-January, or...
I'm okay with that, if y'all are.
We're not going to have committee meetings in December.
Okay, good with that?
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Basket?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Monica to come up and go over a, a application for an ambulance for a hardship application. As she's passing them out to her. And we will need to return these to her after she presents.
So, what I've handed out to you, the first one, the thicker packet, is a request for a financial hardship. And, what they're requesting is that we write off the complete ambulance bill. In that packet, they filled out all the information, and basically, what we have is somebody that does not live in Stevenville, and they're an older person that does not have retirement or anything. The children help support them. And they've also included where the hospital had granted them financial assistance, and they zeroed their bill out. So, I think this clearly meets our definition of a financial hardship, but according to our policy, it has to come before the, the finance committee for approval.
Any questions for Monica?
Does it meet, do we have any guidelines, or is it just if they're asking for it, it comes back to us?
Well, so, that's why they fill out what their, their income is.
And so, it's income-based?
It's income-based, and these people apparently have no income, as their children are actually supporting them. And so, and it's based on, if you, if you look at, we base it on the, the 2014 poverty guidelines at the time. We've not updated that, and so, with not having income, they would qualify.
I'd recommend you look at redoing those guidelines too, because it'll be much higher, and it'd be easier for people to get approval then, because those numbers are what...
I think this is the, the third request that I've had, and only two of them we've actually brought forward to be approved. So, this will be like the second one we've done since I've been here.
Any other questions?
She just answered my question. I was going to ask, how many of these have we actually, this is the first one I've ever seen, and...
Yeah, I believe there's only been, I've, I've had one other request before, and then when we explained to them, you know, the requirements, they're like, well, we just really don't want to pay it, it's not that we can't, doesn't really qualify. And so, we've had one other one that I remember, and it was a, a situation where clearly the people qualified, so...
Pleasure of the council, or the committee.
I move that we approve the financial hardship application.
Second.
For, for ente supopo.
All right, so we've got a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will move the financial hardship application to full council with positive recommendation. The second one is a, consider approval of a reduction in emergency ambulance service.
So, this one's a little different. We, this is a data service, prior, when we were using specialized billing. We're not, no longer using them, and on this one, the, this is involved with attorneys, and they've requested that we reduce the bill from three thousand one oh eight ten to fifteen hundred. When we switched to Emergicon, we actually went, instead of doing itemized billing, where basically you have your ALS, your BLS, and your mileage, and then she billed for everything, like every bandage, every needle. We went with a more flat rate structure with Emergicon. The, if you'll, if you can kind of look at this, the bill that we had on the other one, the ALS, you can see where it just has like three items that, that were billed, and that was a little over two thousand dollars. This one, what she used to do is bill for every little thing, and it was three thousand. Now, I will tell you, with Emergicon, even though they're billing less per average trip, they're collecting more. So, they're not hurting us by, by doing this. And, the fifteen hundred may be a little bit smaller than, than what we would bill today, but I don't think it's necessarily unreasonable, so they've just requested for them to settle this out if we could accept fifteen hundred, and because we're no longer, and let me say that we do allow our billers some leadway on negotiations, I can't remember if it's twenty percent, thirty percent? Yeah, for them to, to negotiate to get the bills paid. This one, we're not using the same biller anymore, we couldn't get any response with them, so we're bringing it to you guys to approve or deny.
Any questions for Monica? When I met with Monica on this, I mean, this is over two years old, I mean, pushing three years older now. I think that, you know, fifty, was it fifty-two percent reductions, or around there of this? If we can collect it, it's all a lot better than, than nothing. So, with that, I will make the motion that we bring the approval of the reduction in emergency ambulance service for this individual to, to council with a positive recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That will move to council for, for the positive recommendation. Next item would be, consider approval of ambulance bad debts receivable write-off.
So, on this one, this again was our accounts that were from specialized billing. They stopped billing for us December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and we switched over to Emergicon on January first. And, what we're asking to write off is the seven hundred and fifty-two thousand one seventy seventy-nine. My experience, both here and in my previous employment, if you don't get paid within about a hundred and eighty days, you're probably not going to get paid. And, and what we're seeing with Emergicon, most of what we collect with them is in a hundred and twenty days. They work it really hard up front to try to collect as much money as they can up front. So, we, we didn't see a, a lot of collections after the hundred and eighty days with specialized billing. As you can see, if you look at this report, it says current, well, I ran this report as of nine thirty twenty twenty-three. She stopped billing in December twenty twenty-two. There's no way that anything should be in the current column, which tells us that she's really not working anything. I've tried to get her to give me a detailed listing, we've had no response. Even with this other one with the write-off, she just basically, her response to them after repeated request was, I don't do their billing anymore. So, she's clearly not working it. We did not have an agreement with Emergicon that they would take over the old stuff. Basically, most of your billers don't want to, because it's a waste of time, they're not going to collect much money on it. So, to clean up our books, and, and just to tell you, when we did the audit, we, we considered this to be a hundred percent bad debt. So, as far as our financial goes, it's not, it's not going to change anything by you allowing me to write it off. It just cleans our books up a little bit, so that's what I'm asking you to do.
And if someone decides to come in and bring us a check, we're going to accept it.
Yeah, it doesn't prevent us, if, if somebody comes with a bill and pays, we can take that money all day long. It just doesn't set on our books anymore.
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned that we set a precedent, not, not that this is not, okay, seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks, but set a precedent out there in public that says if we don't get it within a hundred and twenty days, we're probably not going to get this, therefore, just write it off, because insurance, Medicare is worse than anybody. Well, I'd say maybe Medicaid is worse than Medicare about delay. You can bill Medicaid up to three hundred and sixty-five days past the date of the bill. So, you know, I just, I'd be cautious about us saying, it's a hundred and twenty days, so let's just write it off, that's...
So, when we, when we talk about this, and if you look at most of this, a good chunk of it is, is, is private pay. And so, and, and that's really when we talk about the, the hundred and eighty days, because your insurance is yes. Medicare, Medicaid, you don't get it within a hundred and twenty days, most, it, it takes longer, and they stay on top of that. And there's, there's, the majority of this, over five hundred thousand, is private pay, and a hundred and eighty-one of it is what is considered uninsured charity care. So, the bulk of it is not insurance companies and, and things of that nature, it's, it's really your private pay.
So, it's underinsured, you're saying, or, or no insurance?
Yes, sir.
So, would you be able to identify for us, how much, I mean, I'm not saying, let's call the vote tonight, but you be able to present to us how many, how much of that was indigent services versus people, I mean, I mean, I don't want to get in the situation you had before where someone says, well, I just don't want to pay it.
Yeah, no, and I can't, because I, for, for number one, I've never, as, as far as the emergency billing, I don't get into the weeds on each individual account, mainly because of HIPAA and things of that nature. I work at the high level with the, with this, and we can't get that information from specialized billing. She has been unresponsive.
On that, but the new company, though?
Oh, the new company, yes, we, we work with them, and, and they'll give us whatever we need, so...
I mean, I deal with Medicaid and Medicare and insurance all the time, that's what I, my business does. And so, I mean, I just would be cautious about, if we want to set a precedent or some kind of a rule to consider that person has certain indigence at state, you know, they don't, we, we get staff's ability to write that off, that's one thing.
So, with, so, one of the things we do participate is in that ambulance supplemental surplus program, and, and over time, that has gotten a little bit more restrictive. We don't get near the funds that we did when it originally came onboard. And so, some of those, we do get a little bit of money from that, not, not much anymore, but it's, it's really difficult to, to tell you, you know, how much is going to be indigent, and, and who's not going to pay. I mean, it's, on these accounts, now with Emergicon, we can, and we, with them, we don't, they're not supposed to write stuff off. If they need, if stuff, if they don't think they're going to be able to collect anything, we have an agreement with them that they give us a list, and then I bring it to the finance committee, so... This is just, I can't give you the list, because I don't have access to it. And she's been unresponsive in providing each individual person.
That's what we're talking about tonight, I'm just talking about for policy going forward, is if you're, you're saying you're getting it from Emergicon, right?
Yeah.
And so, that's, you know, obviously, if they're going to get out there and they're getting, I don't know, what, mark ten percent or whatever the number is of what they collect, at some point, they're going to say, I'm tired of this, I'm not ready to do this, and let's just get, write it off. Well, but it's, they're writing off two hundred bucks, we're writing off two thousand.
Yeah, so, our contract with them is they are not supposed to write accounts off.
I understand, but at some point, they give it back to you and say, this is not, they're not responsive, it's not collectible, then you're going to come to us and say, write it off, and I'm just saying, there's a point that they don't want to spend the effort on it, because they don't get it, get the money for.
Well, and actually, with their contract, they collect six of, six and a half percent with a hundred and twenty days. If it's over a hundred and twenty days, it's eighteen percent, and then if we want to have them send people to collection, then it goes up to like twenty-two percent. So, they increase their percentage that they charge us as an incentive for them because of the extra work, so... Now, my previous experience in here too, we have never gone to the point of sending people to collections on ambulance billing, because then you guys get a whole bunch of phone calls, so... But if that is a, if that is a route that the council would like to, to go, that is something we can definitely pursue, if you would so choose.
But I've also, at one point, when I first got on council, we started, this has been an issue for fourteen years, fifteen years I've been on council. And so, I mean, you actually look at the bills, and we are having people that obviously can pay, they just don't want to pay, and because of political decision, and do you want to say, you know, and that, at some point, we've got to make a decision. It, it is a business we're running, we're having to pay for it out of general funds, to pay for stuff that other people have the ability to pay for, and I think, I think it's fair. Some little lady that lives over on Green Street, or whatever, to have to pay for somebody else's bill. And so, I think we ought to, I, I don't have a problem with kind of, some kind of a standard that says, at a certain point, staff has the ability to write it off as well, as, if it's indigent, or there's no way it's going to be collected, but I just don't want us to get in a situation where we say, well, it's a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and eighty days, we'll just write it off. Because that's, we, I know the first year I was on council, it was, we had, we wrote over a million dollars off.
Well, I will tell you that it is my belief that we should not be writing off any accounts unless it comes to council for approval. That's just best practice, so you know what we're doing.
I'm not, I don't have a big problem with that. I'm just saying that there is a point that it may need be us that makes that decision, but I think there is, there are cases where people need to pay their bills.
Sure.
You know, to, to me, it's, the ambulance service is no different than water bill. It's a service that we provided, caused us money, if they have the ability to pay, they should pay.
Sure.
I have one question. I know I'm not on your committee, so I don't...
Oh, perfect for me.
So, what are the ramifications, if you're on this list and you're being written off? What are the ramifications, is there anything for these people that are, I mean, I understand that there's some that are indigent and just absolutely don't have it, but if we're not sending them to collections, and we're not, I mean, there's not a hit to their credit, there's not a hit to the, I mean, what, there's just nothing?
Well, it's the incentive for them to pay.
Right.
So, under the current contract, they're getting phone calls and messages and those sorts of things. What Monica's saying, and all of these are almost two years old, is that about right?
Yeah, they're, or, or more, or more, yeah.
But it's from a previous company.
It's from a previous company. There, there are no consequences to staying on this list, because that previous company isn't working for us anymore, so they're not calling. As Monica said, we don't send them to collections unless the council wants to revisit that decision, so... I mean, you can choose to leave it out there, but no, there's, there's nothing going to happen.
Is this that company we visited in San Antonio?
Yes.
I mean, I was impressed, I sat there and listened to them.
Not this company, this is not the one, the new company is the one we, we visited.
I was impressed with the way they did collections, I mean, the one lady I sat next to is a strong arm, I mean, I hate to get in a dark...
Well, no, 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 the one we visited...
That, that's on our court.
Yeah, that's on our court and our, our property tax that we visited. No, this is a different company, and, you know, when, when you, the incentive is, if you live here in Stevenville, if you don't pay the bill, then there, you know, remember, this all comes from general fund money, which comes from property taxes. So, and it's just like when, in the county, when you go to an ambulance service there, they tell you like, whoa, you're, you're a county resident, don't worry about, we just take whatever your insurance takes. So, there are different ways that, that, that different communities feel about ambulance service.
Well, if, but the county, though, has indigent funds, they have to set aside and spend on stuff like this as well. So, there is, there is an income, or at least a set aside in their budget to pay for some of the indignancy. So, I'm not, I don't make a big deal about it, I just want to say, I just, I just want to make sure we're not going to get out there and just start thinking, well, it's a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and twenty days, or, or, sorry, bring the council write-off, I think we...
No, we, we don't actually do that, but I will say that seriously, if, if you're not going to have us start doing, sending people to collections over this... um, I mean, Emergicon and them will work it as far as we tell them to, but you're, it's, it's like with our water bills. We just have some customers that until we turn their water off, they don't pay the bill, and that's the same thing with ambulance.
That's Leanne's point, and David, or Alan's point, is there is no place at this point where we turn, unless we do something like that, we don't ever turn the water off.
No.
That's the point.
Which we can have a discussion down the road.
Yeah, I just.
Sure, sure. I'm sorry, David, I'm going to take a moment.
Oh, oh, I appreciate it. Um, was, any other questions for Monica? It's a pleasure of the committee.
Well, I'd hate to be the one to make a motion that we write off seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars and everything like that. But if it is totally uncollectible, we have no contact with the company that we're working with, or were working with at the time, and everything like that. And staff has, has, uh, said that it was, uh, the likelihood of being able to recover any of this is, is almost nil. Then to that point, I will make a motion that we, uh, recommend to the council that, uh, we write off seven hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents of emergency ambulance receivables for service through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, this, the, the, Ryan, go ahead.
May I suggest that we come back with, uh, in order to address the question that, uh, both, that Leanne brought up, and as, as the mayor has mentioned, and all two, and that is a change in our policy. So that we do, uh, go after, uh, people that are not paying the debt. Because frankly, it is a cost to all the taxpayers in this community.
I think your point, though, is that before the vote, or the point is that we do that, we can do that now by bringing it to us. So maybe the recommendation would be for the staff to come to us and say, after what period of time do you want us to bring that to you? So we'll give you that direction.
But a, a process that we can go through, a policy, maybe it's a change, maybe it's what we've got existing, but, and, and everything, but, but to bring it to the council.
Will do.
Okay.
So the, uh, writing off of the, uh, seven hundred and two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents of, of bad debts towards ambulance services uh, will be brought before full council with positive recommendation. That concludes the finance committee meeting.
Alrighty, it's that time of year where we reappoint everybody who's on boards and commissions. We have quite a few that are up for, uh, reappointment. We have a few vacant spots. The first four I'd like to discuss is the airport advisory board. Um, place one, three, five, and seven are up for reappointment. They all four have reapplied to serve again on the airport advisory board. We have, we'll see these one by one.
Spoke with Mr. Thomas earlier. Unless there's a particular board where we're going to have changes, we can pull that board out and do it separately, but you, you would be able to do the rest of them as a single list as presented.
Does anybody have any questions about the reappointment of the airport advisory board? To reappoint the four current members.
Chairman Chair, I'd make the motion to reappoint the four current members for the airport advisory board.
Second. Motion in a second, so we'll move that forward to council with positive recommendation to reappoint the four current airport advisory board members. Uh, the next is board of adjustments. We have place one, three, fi, one, three, and five up for reappointment. Place three is currently vacant from Tina, since she is now serving, or she, no, no, I'm sorry. She's good.
She's one and five.
Yeah, one and five. Um, both have reapplied to serve again on the board of adjustments, and that's J.J. Conway and Mary Beach McGuire. Does anybody have any questions about reappointing the two ladies to the board of adjustments? I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint, uh, place one and five for the board of adjustments.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
So we'll move board of adjustments forward with positive recommendation. Um, that does have a few vacant alternate spots, so if anybody's willing to serve on those alternate spots, get your applications into Sarah. You can find that online. The next is the building board. These are just basically reappointed community members to serve on these boards, and so is it one, three, and five? Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
One, three, and five are up for reappointment. Does anybody have any questions? Then I'd make a motion that we reappoint the current building board, places one, three, and five.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Perfect. The next is the electrical board, uh, one, three, and five again, so I just make a, does anybody have any questions about the electrical board? Perfect. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the reappointment of place one, three, and five on the electrical board.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That one moves forward with positive recommendation. The next is the E. Rath County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Um, currently, we have David Tomlinson serving. Uh, this is, Jason, he's our voice for the community on the appraisal board, correct?
That's correct.
It just so happens that he is also, I think, the president of their board as well now. I think that's correct.
That is what I was told the other day as well. Um, he is willing to serve again on the appraisal district board of directors, and so I'd like to, does anybody have any questions for that one?
Now, I'd like to make the motion to appoint David Tomlinson to continue to serve in that position on the appraisal district board of directors.
Second. Perfect. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That one moves forward to council with positive recommendation. Um, the next is the library advisory board. Um, place one and five have reapplied. So does anybody have any questions about reappointing place one and five on the library advisory board? And then I'll make a motion that we reappoint place one and five on the library advisory board.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Perfect. Currently, on the main street advisory board, we have place one, three, five, and seven open. We have three and five who have reapplied, one and seven are still remaining vacant. Uh, does anybody have any questions about reappointing, uh, Dr. Schouse or Justin Perez on the main street advisory board? With that, I'll make a motion that we approve place one and five, I'm sorry.
Three and five.
Three and five on the main street advisory board.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Perfect. That one moves forward with positive recommendation. The mechanical board, place three, um, is currently up for reappointment, so I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint on the mechanical board.
Second.
All in favor say aye? Uh, that one moves forward as well. The next is, um, planning and zoning, place one, three, five, and seven are up for reappointment. One, three, and five have reapplied, so seven will be, will be vacant if we haven't heard from her.
That's up to you all.
So we can reappoint them if they haven't applied?
That's a question. Did you hear from Mr. Ashby?
We could just wait on that one. Reappoint the others and wait on them.
Was that your recommendation?
Yeah.
He would recommend leaving that one blank for now.
Only address one, three, and five.
Go on to the other.
Yes, sir. Um, so with that, I'd like to make your recommendation that we reappoint places one, three, and five on planning and zoning. Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Perfect. That leaves place seven up for discussion, and then we also have, that's it. That one's full, sorry. The yellow is going to be off on Sarah's list here.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Um, the next is the plumbing advisory board, and I would recommend that we, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint the current members on the plumbing board. Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry to make a, oh, yeah, you're second, sorry. Next is CETA, Stevensville Economic Top Team Board. So we have reappointments from place three and five, but Malcolm is, his term is ending. Because he was a one-year term.
Okay.
And we do have one applicant, which is Connie Woolley.
Is it in the packet?
Yeah. Anybody have questions about appointing Connie Woolley to the CETA board in place one?
I make the motion of, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Leanne, help, love it.
I make the motion that we, um, put Connie Woolley in place one for the CETA board.
To replace Malcolm Cross?
I'm sorry, two.
Two, okay.
I'm sorry, I understood you said place one or place two?
Place one, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I'm sorry, place two.
It's place two, okay.
Wait a minute.
Then let me redo that. I,
so sorry.
I recommend that, or I make the motion that we appoint Connie Woolley to place two, replacing Malcolm Cross on the CETA board.
Second then. These terms start in January, correct?
Correct. We will have to interview Ms. Woolley, since she's being appointed to the board in December.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, and, and Malcolm's term ends in January, correct?
Yes.
December thirty-first.
Okay, I mean, yeah.
There's term, there's term limits on CETA, and for some reason, his terms were off a year, so he wouldn't, his spot would normally not be up for reappointment, but, uh, the way his terms fell, he's, he's just got an off year for somebody.
Okay.
So we're going to, so Connie is going to be interviewed at the December council meeting. So then I'd like to make a recommended, uh, uh, motion that we reappoint place three and five on, uh, the CETA board.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
You have those second. So that one will also move forward to council with positive recommendation.
Sorry, can I say one thing? Do we vote on my motion?
I don't think so.
I don't think we voted on my motion.
Thank you, Leanne.
Sorry. So Leanne, in the motion you second, it's all in favor for appointing Connie Woolley to place two on the CETA board?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. That one moves forward. The next is tourism and visitors, place one, three, and five are up for reappointment. And we only have, uh, place three and five have reapplied. So I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint place three and five on the tourism and visitor bureau advisory board.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And then Western Heritage, this is the board that we created last year, uh, but one, three, and five are up for reappointment.
We staggered them.
You get them on a regular schedule like the other advisory boards. Um, all three have applied. So I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint the three, one, three, and five seats on the Western Heritage advisory board.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Perfect. So that one moves forward with positive recommendation. With all that, that is all the boards to be reappointed.
Mr. Baskett, will you handle public health and safety committee?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to bring up Chief Harris, uh, so we can go over the, uh, so the approval of changes to the code of ordinances, parking.
Mr. Mayor, chair, and members of the public health and safety board and the council. This is, uh, for chapter seventy-five, deals with construct, new construction, and, uh, on both locations, actually. So what we're requesting to change be is, the first one is West Long Street. Both sides of the intersection from Graham to its intersection with South Lillian. I'll speak separately in just a second. The second and third changes are on Race Avenue, or Race Street is also known as West Side, from its intersection with Charlton to intersection with Collins, all no parking. And East Side, from its intersection with Charlton to the intersection with Frye, also no parking on that side. And so all related to, um, population changes and so forth, but it deals with the safety of being able to pass those streets. So there's a, some more detailed information, I can read that to you, or I'll let you read that in the background aspect of that. But, um, with the completion of West Long, again, let's talk about that. And then also with the completion of the Purple Rail Apartments. There is additional parking now available on part of that, um, there by the apartments there that will help relieve the side streets, and we don't believe create an issue there. And you all, usually always ask me about contact with the neighbors, so requested by those, a lot of rental houses, as we all well know. And so we can't make all of the college students happy related to that, but that we believe there's ample parking in, with the driveways that are there. And having a full-time traffic sergeant now, he spends most of his time instead of sending a letter, which he does sometimes, but he goes and talks to them personally. Or we receive complaints from them. Again, can't make everyone happy, but we believe the majority of those tenants and residents in these areas will be happy with these changes.
Perfect.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question on, when we, the first part of Frye Street that was completed, I know we, we put the no parking signs up. Uh, how has the, uh, enforcement of that gone? Have we had any issues?
Um.
I mean, I'm sorry, of Long Street. I said Frye, not Long Street.
No, sir. Nothing, nothing major. I mean, again, no, no, sir, not from that area.
Yeah, I've noticed that this started to, people are finally starting to catch on and, and, and not parking as much on Long Street. And, uh, the Race Street, uh, this is going to be fantastic, because I drove down Race Street a couple weeks ago and,
Yes, sir. It's tough.
Had to bring my mirrors in.
Correct.
So.
Yes, sir. Back to your original question, no issues with the Long Street enforcement from last year's changes?
Fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Chief Harris?
So will we do something to, like, I mean, I hate to add to y'all's workload, but maybe put a s, sign or something on the door that says, no parking after this date? Just to let those people, I mean, there's really not that many houses between,
Correct.
Alexander Highway and Lillian, well, those apartments, but, I mean, actual houses that I think it would affect.
Right. We can, we can do an educational campaign that the changes have been made.
Something that's been typical we've done in the past is, is a letter delivered to the residents of the change, but also, uh, giving about a month beyond when the signs go up as a warning period before you transition and, uh, regular citations.
We'll also do social media campaigns with it also. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chief Harris?
I, I just have one more statement. I love the look of it. I think it makes Long Street look so much better.
So much safer.
It's so much, yes.
I mean, you can, we do get some speeds there sometimes. Those don't always go well with those who are stopped for speeding.
I think we actually need to visit other areas of our town with, uh, this as well. Uh, there's several places that it's hard to, uh, get a truck down, so, or van, or, or regular car some days, so.
We've actually had conversations about doing no parking for the entire city and, um, for all city streets, but that's, that's, just kidding.
Oh, man.
Related to that, to, to liven that up and that, but number one complaint that I received is parking, and it is David.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
And so, um, having two, two traffic officers, they, they need them working on other things other than just parking, but it's a safety issue.
Absolutely.
Can you do anything with the crews that are putting the new gas lines?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, depending on what they do related to it.
Oh.
You can talk their neck up in the meeting.
They think they own the streets. They're, they're the rudest bunch of people I think I've ever seen.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baskett, and also, as we are taking a look at, at every area that we can.
That'd be, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for all you do, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with that being said, I will make the motion that, uh, we, uh, move, uh, we take the, uh, changes of the c, of code of ordinances for parking with, on West Long Street, um, Graham to Lillian, and North Race, uh, to council with positive recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
Thank you. That concludes the public safety report.
With that, it's six thirty-one, no, six thirty-four, and we'll stand adjourned from the city council, uh, committee meetings, and we'll reconvene at special council meeting at five-thirty. We have a couple presentations. First one is, uh, life-saving award presentation, Chief. You got a crowd with you tonight.
Just a few we lost, so.
I think, I think by the noise we heard a while ago, they, they left.
They leave, huh?
We'll let them come in and stand up front. Tonight, I get the distinct honor to present a couple awards, uh, to the crew that's left, and we'll, we'll make sure that the others that had to go, uh, get theirs. But it's a result of a, a, a call that had a very positive outcome, uh, and I'm going to review that call if y'all could come on up.
Come on, boys, get up there in front.
I want you to. I want you to endure this with ear. There you go.
Endure this with you.
Yeah, I want them to feel it.
Appreciate you.
Yeah. So just a little background, in August of this year, Charlton State University was nearing the completion of its new parking garage. And as customary, our fire marshal, Mr. Greg Trump, informed operations division that we had been granted clearance to tour the new facility. And this was done to familiarize and orient our crews with the complex layout of the building. About a week later, B shift, as a part of this initiative, inspected the facility, including a crawl space beneath the building. The following shift, just before eleven P.M., we received a distressing nine-one-one call. The caller reported that a young man had suffered an electric shock while working in the crawl space and was still trapped under the building. Upon arrival, one of the medic crew members immediately proceeded to confirm the power had been shut off to the building. And the other crew member was directed to a manhole that provided access into the crawl space. Two individuals could be seen approximately a hundred feet from the opening, with one performing a modified CPR because of the cramped space under the building. Our medic was joined by the other crew member, and they took over CPR under the building and started to move the patient to a location under the building that provided better access for emergency care. They actually defibrillated, shocked the patient while under the building, moved him to a backboard, and then eventually to a wheeled skid unit to move the patient toward the opening, all the while performing CPR and monitoring the cardiac rhythm. They had to move the skid over several obstacles, pipes, to get it to the opening. And during that, again, CPR was continued. He was moved to then a Stokes Basket, that's the old basket you would have seen like on emergency back in the day, to perform the extrication. The engine and truck crews were rapidly establishing the rescue operation to extract the victim. Division Chief Elston arrived on scene, provided some command and support during this critical phase. The Stokes Baskets, the Stokes Basket was successfully pulled through the manhole, and care was continued in the ambulance. Remarkably, the victim regained consciousness. Anticipating the need, before arrival, Engine One had called for air medical to be on standby and eventually dispatched them to the airport. Once in the ambulance, the patient was transported directly to Clarkfield, where air evac was on the ground waiting for them to arrive. Care was transferred, transferred, and the patient was flown to Fort Worth for further medical care. I'm happy to report, I got to speak with the young man yesterday on the phone. He's doing fine, with almost no lasting deficits at all from the event. Probably the best thing is, he says he has no memory of the event. He is very thankful to the crew and sends his appreciation. And especially to his friend, who had to kick him off of the two-hundred-seventy-seven volt line and start CPR. He indicated how blessed he was to come out of the situation as he did. So tonight, we want to recognize our firefighters that were on the scene for the exceptional teamwork, extraordinary efforts during a tactical rescue incident, displaying remarkable courage and quick decision-making resulting in a successful rescue. We're gonna award a unit citation award to Captain Cody Wells, firefighters Kirk Bloom, Zach Haygood, Cole Carlin, Jackson Allen, Sam Mons, Aaron Hoodie, and division chief Chris Elston. We're also recognizing the medic crew and the personnel that assisted in the direct EMS treatment with a cardiac arrest life-saving award, which is presented to the member of the fire department who performed an act of exceptional bravery and skill that directly resulted in the saving of a human life in cardiac arrest. That'll go to firefighter Jackson Allen, Aaron Hoodie, EMT Zach Haygood, and Cole Carlin. So please join me in congratulating these men in professional service to the city of Stevenville.
We got her first.
The next item is a proclamation, and I'll read the proclamation, and I only have Daryl come up, and who else? Well, we lost our other person. I want you to come up here. This is recognizing Stevenville as a tourism-friendly community. You'll know, remember, we are both a music-friendly and a music, movie-friendly community. And you wanna tell us just a little bit about what this is about?
Well, as mentioned earlier, Mayor Savin, that, I guess it was maybe two or three months ago, we came to you asking you for the opportunity to apply for this tourism-friendly certification. And we are in hopes that we will be able to have that designation to help us draw and attract folks to the city of Stevenville, to have the visitors stay overnight with us and enjoy what the, what the community has to offer.
Thank you. So with that, whereas the city of Stevenville, located in the heart of E wrath County, is renowned for its rich history, diverse culture, western heritage, and welcoming atmosphere. Whereas Stevenville takes a great, takes great pride in offering exceptional experiences for visitors from near and far, featuring unique attractions, local businesses, recreational opportunities, and a taste of authentic Texas charm and hospitality. And whereas the citizens of Stevenville, in participation with local government, businesses, and community organizations, have worked diligently to create an environment that is inclusive, welcoming, hospitable to tourists, ensuring that every visitor feels like a part of our community. And whereas the development of tourism in the city of Stevenville enhances our economy by supporting local businesses, generating jobs, and promoting sustainable growth, while also preserving our natural and cultural resources for future generations. And whereas the city of Stevenville continues to invest in infrastructure, events, and amenities designed to enhance the visitor experience, fostering a tourism-friendly environment that attracts both new and returning guests. And whereas it is essential for communities to recognize and celebrate the value of tourism as a key driver of economic prosperity, cultural exchange, and regional pride. Now therefore, I, Doug Savin, Mayor of Stevenville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the city of Stevenville is a tourism-friendly community, and encourage citizens to join me in recognizing the positive, the positive effect tourism has on our economy, growth, and image of the city of Stevenville.
Thank you, Mayor.
Why don't you take a picture of him?
One, two, three.
Thank y'all very much. Next item, Ms. Durfee, when she gets back to her seat, we're gonna turn over tourism and visitors bureau committee to her. Ms. Durfee.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a positive recommendation for the airport rules and regulations to be passed on to the full council that would adopt the, the proposed airport rules and regulations. So if you have any questions? Then I would make the motion that we adopt resolution twenty-twenty-four R thirteen of the new airport rules and regulations.
No, the resolutions for are item number six.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It just be as presented in committee.
Yeah. Okay, then just as, I make the motion as presented in committee that we adopt the proposed airport rules and regulations.
There, a second.
All in favor?
No, I'll, I'll do that. All in favor, say aye? Motion passes. That's, that's not easy.
Okay, and then we also had a positive recommendation that we have KSA engineering for the airport layout plan update with narrative and survey. If you have any questions? I would make the motion that we, um, sorry. Yes, accept the committee's recommendation for the KSA engineering for the airport layout plan update.
I have a motion here, a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then for six, I would make the recommendation for resolution twenty-twenty-four R thirteen, which is the airport improvement plan and survey.
I have a motion here, a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Baskett?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met earlier this evening, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The first item was to consider approval of an ambulance financial hardship application. The committee voted a three to, three to oh to bring this to council with a positive recommendation. If you have any questions on the application as presented? Here none, I will make the motion that we approve the ambulance financial hardship application as was presented in committee meetings.
There, a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next agenda item in the committee was a reduction in emergency ambulance service for an individual. This was also a three, three oh vote to bring to the council with a positive recommendation. Any questions on this invoice?
It wasn't stated, or maybe I didn't hear, the implication is if we reduce it, they're gonna pay that reduced amount, correct?
That is correct, sir. That is correct. That was the, that was their negotiation.
Okay, but I, it, that wasn't stated, or I didn't catch it if it was, but
It was implied.
Okay, I thought so. All right.
It's their attorney sent the letter.
Yes, their, their attorney did send the letter.
Correct.
Ask him for the negotiation.
But it didn't say in the letter, "If you reduce this, we'll pay this. Will you reduce it to this?" Okay.
We got a good attorney sitting down here. He'll sic 'em.
Any other questions on the, the reduction in the emergency ambulance service invoice? Here none, I will make the motion that we approve the reduction in the emergency ambulance service invoice as presented in committee.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The last agenda item that we discussed was an approval of ambulance bad debts receivable as a write-off. This was in the neighborhood of seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars, I believe. Seven fifty-two. I'm dyslexic, sorry. Seven-fifty-two thousand dollars. The committee did vote three oh to bring this to council with a positive recommendation. Do we have any questions on this matter? Here none, I will make the motion to approve the bad debts write-off as presented in committee meetings.
There, a second? Was that you, Brandon?
Yes.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That concludes.
Ms. Smith?
Nomination's committee met on November nineteenth, about thirty-four minutes ago.
You're counting, right?
Recently.
To discuss a reappointment of our current boards and advisories. We have one that we need to act on tonight, and which is the nomination for our board seat on the E wrath County appraisal district board of directors. It was brought to council with positive recommendation that we reappoint David Tomlinson to the E wrath County appraisal district board of directors as our Stevenville, uh, city representative.
I have a question. In the past, haven't we had David Tomlinson come speak when we do this, on this board, or no? Oh, I thought, I thought we did. Okay, sorry. Oh, sorry, my bad.
Many's not to the reappointees.
Yes. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint David Tomlinson to the E wrath County appraisal district board of directors.
There, here, a second.
Second.
Boy, I'll tell you what. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That is all for tonight.
In compliance with the provisions of Texas Open Meetings Law, also chapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, annotating accordance with section five-five-one dot oh seventeen, deliberation regarding, liberation regarding real property, deliberate that purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property to a real property located in S twenty-eight-hundred College Heights Edition. We will be back, and any action taken in committee will be discussed in public.